Good evening to all of our citizens that's here tonight. Thank you for coming, thank you for being concerned with the city of Pohokee. We call it order, I'm here to order, we have an invocation and pledge released by Mother Ida Pringle. Let's all stand please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Father, I come before you, right now, Father, meek and humble as I know how. Father, just to say thank you, Father. Father, for letting us gather together again to another city meeting, Father. Father, now make sure in the name of Jesus, Father. Let this be a sweet, sweet meeting this evening, Father. Father, let everybody have a good understanding about everything, Father. Father, we're here to talk about our city, Father. Father, we're not for no confusion, Father. Father, and I just want to say thank you. And bless everyone that's here and the ones that on their way. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just to let you know that the mayor's a little under the weather tonight to be here in public, but he is on the phone. So, and if we would, we would like to have a little silent, private minute or so just for the people of Israel, if it was all possible. Thank you. Now, we have our roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Perez.
Yeah.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Deputy Clerk is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we have additions of emergency basis from our City Manager in a deletions and approval of agenda items.
None at this time, ma'am.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our public comments, public service announcements, presentation, and proclamation. This session of agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should be completed and returned to the City Clerk. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium. You can state your address, your name, for the record. And just a little housekeeping on that note. Tonight, we will not be having yielding of time tonight. This is, there's nothing in our ordinance, there's nothing in our agenda that allows this to take place. So, tonight, as me being chair, we would not be having yielding of time to that. So, if you have three minutes, you would do your three minutes. And whether you, if you're talking for Ms. Jay, and you have something to say, let it all wrap up into your three minutes. If you are reading something, and you're reading for someone else, please let that be your three minutes. Do we understand? Also, on that, on that note, also, also, there will not be any interruption once the City Commission meeting start their agenda items. If there be any disruption in this meeting, we will ask the PBSO to escort you out. We will be having a cordial and pleasant commission meeting. We thank all of our citizens that come to the commission meeting, but we will do everything decent and in order tonight. Thank you. Now, we will have our addition, our public comments from our citizens. Is there any?
Yes, ma'am, first person is Von Jones. The timer is not working, so I'll set one via phone. Once it rings, I'll ring the bell.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Von Jones, 315 Amarillo's Court, Pohokee. My concerns are... Mr. Lucas, how you doing, sir?
I'm fine.
Oh, yes, refrasing back from day one, August 22nd. When you accepted my application from the Opera Farm. You called me on the 24th. You said I needed, I had everything I needed. You give me a call back on the 28th. When your finance director come, I never got the call. September 23rd, September 12th, I inform you about not getting a call from you on that Monday. You gave me no response in that meeting. September 26th, I address you again about the phone call. You said you'll give me a call. September 27th, you called and you said Ms. Adams are going to give me a call. She did. But what you had stated to me earlier in the process, it's totally different from what she said. So, I don't know who to listen to. You said I had everything I need, but she said, one of them wasn't right. And she would have to get with the commissioners and the finance director. And she would give me a call back. This been since last Wednesday, I want to say, last Thursday. I haven't received a call yet.
So, this being public comments, this isn't question and answer, but I will tell you that your deadline for our program has passed, but I'm trying to work with you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right.
But you don't have to send off, send me all the way around the world. You know, be cordial with me, I can be cordial with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any more comment cards?
Yes, ma'am. The next one is from Ms. Ally Biggs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ally Biggs, 1547, Reverend Jesse Biggs, Willaport, Florida. To Mayor Bab, Vice Mayor Mervin, and Commissioners, City Manager, and staff. I'm reading a letter. On September 29th, Palm Beach County's Office of Inspector General, OIG, released a report titled "City of Pohokee's Sale of Surprised Profits." The report's focus was the improper sale of two city-owned ATVs by former manager Greg Thompson, in which he inappropriately benefited personally from that action. Note, ultimately, he ultimately declared himself the winning bidder. After acquiring the ATV, he said the ATV from an undisclosed profit, he sold the ATV for an undisclosed profit. Overall, the investigative report makes clear that the totality of conduct by then-city manager Thompson reflects a blatant lack of responsibility, fairness, accountability, and basic stewardship of taxpayers' dollars. On page 18 of Report 2022-0012, he, Thompson, did recall that he profited from the sale. Another slap in the face in Pohokee's government, community residence, to Pohokee's government, community residence, and to the general public is that Thompson felt no need to respond to the report. I squarely place blame on this IG report on Bowlin, Perez, and Gonzalez, who hired Thompson at the Pohokee as the Pohokee City Manager on October 12th, 2021. Thompson was brought on board without an application and resume at the behest of his friend, Mr. Brandonberg. This is carried out without oversight or due diligence by Bowlin, Perez, and Gonzalez with no regard to consequences. I call upon the citizens of Pohokee to publicly ask Perez, Gonzalez, and Bowlin for their response to Thompson's actions as well as the report. They should also be asked if they should, if they still take ownership of their actions to put Thompson in the management role. Also, ask if they accept blame for this particular OIG report as they have criticized past OIG report under a different management. Citizens, wake up, this is election time. Let's face the truth, I say.
Yeah. Any more comments?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Annie Iful.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Annie Iful, Healthier Glaze. Actually, I'm here in collaboration with the Iota Omicron Zeta Chapter, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority. They're coming shortly. The month of October is a lot of different campaigns. Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as well as Brain Health. Healthier Glaze and the Zetas are partnering to paint the community purple and asking everyone to wear, either wear purple, and we also have a couple of light bulbs to use at your homes to bring awareness to domestic violence. It's one of those things that people don't like to talk about, but it's happening every day in our communities. And it's now trickling down to our kids. And so, we're seeing a lot of kids that are being abused by their boyfriends or girlfriends at a young age, and we need to bring awareness and attention to this matter. On another note, some couple of other community announcements. On October 28th, at Amarillo's Gardens, Healthier Glaze, the Faith Health Educators, we're going to be doing a health event at Amarillo's Gardens. It's free and open to the public. We're going to be doing diabetes screening, hypertension screening, as well as circulation screening, along with Empire Healthcare, right across the street. So, I just want to make sure that you...
I'm on it.
I'm sorry. Um, what time is it? I think it's from 10:00 to 10:02 at Amarillo's Gardens on October 28th. And then this past, on September 29th, Empire Healthcare with Healthier Glaze, we hosted a Lunch and Learn on women's health and breast cancer. And Dr. Jenga did a wonderful job of presenting information about the importance of taking care of your health. And we'll be doing a couple of more of those things in the community in the future. And then, finally, we're working on bringing our mental health awareness campaign to Pohokee, trying to do a mental health conversation for parents. How to prepare our parents on having those difficult conversations when they noticing changes in their children, and they don't know how to respond to it. So, stay tuned. If you, we usually post things on our Healthier Glaze page. Also, we're also partnering with Lakeside Medical Center to do a Diabetes Awareness Day event at Lakeside Medical Center. So, the, once the flyer is finalized, I will get it to you guys to share on your page. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if anybody needs a bulb, I'll come back here. Any more comments, Madam?
Yes, ma'am. The next one is from Ms. Ida Pringle.
Hell, y'all know I'm gonna make you laugh. That's my, I believe that my birthmark. But anyway, anyway, I'm here tonight. Oh, my name, Ida Pringle. I live at 316 Kismett Avenue, Pohokee, Florida. I'm here tonight to talk about, I was, first I want to say thank God for the splash pad being fixed by our children. I don't have no little children, but I care, I love children. And I'm here to talk about, I was told that you all don't, I had a bathroom locked up, up there to the park. And so, when my grandbaby come, and she love to be to the park and thing. So, what she supposed to do, and she have to go to the restroom. And the doors are locked. And I also would like to say, talk about me, a ramp. I don't know if the city do that or not, but I'm asking, could I get a ramp? Y'all answer me now, y'all ain't like you got your mouth on mute. So, can you tell me, sub city manager?
I'll look into it for you and give you a call.
Okay. Well, what wrong with the clock? Cause y'all know I talk up, so.
It'll ring, the clock is not working at the moment, so I have it set on the phone.
Okay, okay. And so, and like you, uh, not like, when you was up and talking about the offer money. Y'all still giving our offer money?
Well, it's, the first round of things that we have allocated has been used, so we got to come back and re...
Oh, cause I heard the saying, y'all told her she late, it's the date and then it expired?
Yes, ma'am.
So, but when the date re, on the expired, let Ms. Pringle know.
Yes, ma'am.
Amen. You all be blessed.
You too. Vice Mayor? Uh, just to address the bathroom. To address the bathroom, uh, Mr. Williams is back. Can you address the restrooms at Commissioner Park, sir?
So, we have a couple of issues with the restroom. In the past six months, we've had at least three break-ins. About three vandalisms. Where they go in, they break up the sinks, they break up the toilets, they put feces all over the wall, all over the floors. We go out, fix the toilets, fix the sinks, change the locks on the doors, open the restroom again, same thing. I think I called the PBSO out at least three times and got three different incident reports. So, we kind of in a dilemma. We know we need supervision, and I'm more than willing to work with any citizen that's willing to donate or sacrifice some of their time. If you want to, if you're willing, if you have kids out there in the splash pad and you willing to take home the responsibility of making sure that no one go in and vandalize the restrooms, I would be more than happy to do it. But at this point, the best course of action right now is to try to secure the restrooms until we can find other means to try to at least protect our restrooms at this moment.
Greg. Does this happen during the day?
I don't know exactly when it happens. I know I get called, and when we go to the restroom, they...
But is it, is it, are the locks broken? I mean, you could tell if they break in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Locks was actually broken. I mean, doors was kicked in, uh, they was kicked, the locks was, was kicked off the door. We had one incident, the last incident, there's a water spigot on the back part of the restroom. Someone broke the water spigot, and then we had water just flowing all over the back part of the restroom. I got a call from City Manager. We had to go, go out, cut the water off, and then, and I had to pay the county to come in and fix the pipe. So, it's, it's, I don't know what to do. I'm trying to do anything humanly possible, but...
About putting an alarm. Security alarm, just like you have it here in the city hall and everywhere else. Or cameras. I mean, it's public park, so we have to have the bathrooms open.
Yeah.
And I understand, you know, we can't keep up with the vandalism, but...
Well, one of the issues we've been experiencing out there is homelessness. So, we, some mornings we go out, and you may see seven to eight people sleeping on benches and things of that nature.
At the park?
Yes. Yes, at the park. So...
But we have a homeless shelter.
Exactly. But, uh, so, those are some of the issues that, that we have to deal with. Even with the splash pad, we have to put chains on the gate cause they climb over the gate, or they kick the gate in. They go and cut the shower on, so they could take a shower and things of that nature. But then it's unsafe when we talking about kids at the splash pad, so...
Well, we can't have that.
Yes, so...
So, um, can we have a park attendant, a city employee park attendant?
I mean, that's something we can, we could, the splash pads are open from 2:00 to 5:00. So, we could get someone just from 2:00 to 5:00. At least we can have the restrooms open for the kids at that time. And then, um...
I hope y'all paying, I take the job.
I think we need a park attendant.
Yeah, that, that, that's something we could...
Maybe that has to be budgeted.
That's it? We have applications online, you can go to the City of Pohokee.
The next comment card is from Mr. Robert Love.
Green Acres, Landtown, West Palm, any kind of where you want to call it. I see somebody set up in here and say, let's do things decent and in order. You don't do things decent and in order when you doing when you want and how you want. See on here, on H, it says they don't vote on people having, what people can take the time or not. But they just start the meeting off and say, we gonna do it. There ain't nobody up there voted on whether anybody can speak for somebody else's time. Somebody named Mervin just set up there and said, we gonna do things decent and in order. It's supposed to be voted on on H, but decent and in order is pointed when you want. Ain't nobody gonna do this stuff. People get authority, they don't know what authority is. They don't know what authority is. You don't talk to people like that, they don't understand. And see, and then it'll take three minutes for me to go where I'm going tonight cause I know Ms. Johnson and Allen wasn't gonna be in here tonight. Cause they watched my live, and she sat up on April the 23rd, 2021. I got it on live, I got it on some lives, and said, Barfield Highway gonna be done in 14 months. It's 30 months down the damn road, and Barfield Highway still ain't done. She, I got it on live, where she say, 14 months? If y'all vote on it, in 14 months, it go April the 23rd. And I'm just getting April, I'm gonna say May. Start in May, in 2020 month, and see in Barfield Highway done. And it's 30 months down the road. Another thing, Chandler sat up there, I got it on live, I'm sure, I'm proving all of what I'm saying. Chandler sat up there, seven days before they got sworn in. They probably got sworn in that night. I'm resigning. He resigned with seven days. I'm resigning, seven days. How many days there on the contract?
Mr. Robert Love, you need to talk to the commissioner.
I'm gonna say on the contract, Mervin, I know you know, 30. But y'all let him resign with seven days. And then y'all forced the pen. That same attorney over there forced y'all to pay him. Forced them to pay him when she attorney, how she the attorney? And then she know his 30 days on this contract that he got to, uh, pro, pro... When she attorney, how she the attorney, and then she know his thirty days on this contract that he got to, uh, pro, pro, that he supposed to, how you put it? But you understand what I'm saying. That, that, you understand what I'm saying. He's supposed to put his, his resignation in thirty days before, but he put it in the night y'all got elected. When y'all got elected, he know he was gonna get fired. That's why Chandler sat up there. That's why they come, call Greg Thompson about some four wheelers. Y'all looking for anybody white to blame. Y'all looking for anybody white to blame. You need to blame Chandler for them six years when you sat up there and robbed this town. Y'all can laugh till you get tired, but you know I ain't lying. Chandler gave a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to somebody and they ain't get a dime back. Y'all can go on and laugh till you get tired, because some of y'all was sitting right up there when Chandler was doing everything and were treating y'all like a dog. And that's all y'all saying after every evaluation. He treat me like a dog. He treat me like a dog.
Is there any more comments, ma'am? Yes, ma'am. The next person is Ms. Irma Shannon.
We're not doing that tonight, sorry.
Y'all ain't voting on that.
There's nothing in our.
Y'all you voting on that.
Mr. Robert Love, there's nothing.
You said it happened in every meeting, but now.
There's nothing in our ordinance. There's nothing in our, uh, trying to, we have to allow and permit that tonight. So we would not be yielding minutes tonight. Thank you.
Before you vote on.
You said?
That's what y'all problem is. Y'all think y'all do things that y'all want.
She's correct. We had a vote on that.
People call this meeting to order, please.
You cannot, you cannot bend rules to your, cannot bend rules to your, to your convenience. You can't do that.
That's not about my.
Yes, it is about your convenience. It's right there for us to vote on upcoming. We have a vote on it yet. It's right there.
We will not have that permitted tonight.
But you can't do that. You cannot do that. You're violating the same black community that, that stood there for you to argue everything. You're trying to shut them up on their own rights, for the same rights. You're trying to shut them from the same rights.
They will not be done tonight. Madam Currie, is there any more comments?
Ms. Joanne.
Castro, you're not.
I'm, I'm not. My name is Claire Mervin. I am the chair of this meeting tonight.
After you bending the rules to your convenience, there's plenty of videos showing that you, that you support how you are supported.
Officer, if this continue on, if this, if speak out and they're disrupting the meeting, we will ask them to be escorted tonight. Thank you.
That will be voted on.
Attorney, can you please clear this for me?
Sure. There is nothing, you're correct. There's nothing in the charter. There's nothing in the ordinances that allow for yielding of time to other people in the public. Um, one of the things that the mayor said he wanted to do, technically the mayor could, could do just what you're doing tonight. He has allowed it, um, in recent meetings, but it doesn't have to be so. So you're presiding over the meeting tonight. If you find that that's not what you want to do, I think the mayor's comment was that he just wanted it to be clear and he wanted it to be voted on, and that's why you have something in front of you tonight. However, there is nothing that addresses it. I don't know of any other city that does it. And if you choose that this is how you want to preside over your meeting, I think you have the absolute right to do so.
Thank you, city attorney.
Is there anything in the charter says they cannot do that?
Well, of course, that's the point. And so this would, this would make it clear. So she, so, no, it, it wasn't all the years. It's just, it just started. Like, just within the last year.
The same group that you're a part of, when they came attacking us, right? It was permitted. It was permitted. The same group.
That, that, that never happened. And I don't even know what you're talking about.
Now, the same group flipped around on them. Now they don't wanna do it. Not just so not be called out. You don't wanna be called out by the same group.
Madam Currie, is there any more comments?
Ms. Joanne Coberson.
Joanne Coberson, sixteen twenty-one East Main Street. I wrote this down before Mr. Love spoke. And it said, um, how can you amend this ordinance, this, if it hasn't even been voted on yet? Or do y'all already know how it's gonna go when you vote? I'm against the ordinance twenty, twenty-three oh seven. Limiting the ones up there just two minutes and limiting the ones at the meeting to speak. Is, uh, is the only way we know what's going on when somebody asks questions up there. We don't see the packages that y'all give. So we don't know unless somebody's asking questions, we don't know what's going on or what's in it. So I like somebody asking questions. I like that, that spin, uh, said, we're always in the dark. We've been in the dark six years. Chandler kept us in the dark. He run every one of us that spoke all the time out. The other thing I'd like to say is that black fence around that football field is the tackiest thing I have ever seen. It looks, it makes the town look cheap. And if, if we're losing a little dollar over it, that's crazy. The other, another note, I had, was at my mother's. And those tractors and, uh, backhoes or wherever they are, are running up and down Elm Street to get to the other end from Family Dollar or Dollar General, dropping dirt, tearing up the road. We're gonna have another road in Pahokee tore up. Unless they're taking dirt to somebody's house in Vetville that works for the city, is all I know. Uh, I, the speaking of, um, of Greg, one little thing, all the stuff that Chandler did, nobody wants to talk about. He sold all kind of equipment. He sold all kind of vehicles. He sold kinda, all kind of everything. S A J, he knows all about it. And the bathroom, bathroom issue, why can't we put cameras up? Why can't we have, uh, somebody, uh, puts, uh, the thing needs a bathroom. And if we got homeless people going down there, something needs to be done about that. Um, the other thing, when Mr. Love was speaking and you told him to talk to y'all and not the audience, we're the only, y'all don't answer. You look at us like we're crazy. So if we talk to them, we're talking our concern that we want y'all to know.
Yes, the next comment is from Mr. Carlos Lemmons.
Good evening. I'm Carlos Lemmons, three fifty-five and on the app. Um, first and foremost, I just wanna say thank you guys for your service. Everything that you do, whether people like it or not, thank you. Um, I'm the president here at the baby, the baby blue that was poker football program, Lily. I'm here to bring awareness to the, um, defense situation around the field, surrounding the field. Everywhere we go, every city, every other community, every other organization, there's a fence surrounding the field. It's for the safety of the kids. It's for the safety of the kids, the coaches, the spectators. It's very dangerous and it can cause other issues. If, you know, people are their kids, kids running around out here having a nice time at the playground. So we need a fence. We need a fence just to protect the public, protect the coaches, protect the players. That's the, that's the, that's why the fence is so important to us. So we just here to kinda, we know you guys, you, you, you doing your best. We just here to nudge you all. You know what I'm saying? Um, regarding the, um, silk fence, again, that, it's a business. So we gotta shift our minds. It's a business out here. We losing lots of money in order to support our youth football program. If we don't do it, it won't be done. So we trying to do the best that we can in order to give these kids an experience that we didn't have. So we've all collectively been places with football. We know how important football is to this community. So revenues, we need the revenue. We need people to come in to watch their grandkids, their, their nephews. And that fence is not harming no one. I mean, the, the silk fence at least. It's not, it's not harming anyone. If you can't see, pay a few dollars to get in and see. Simple as that.
And, and, and in addition to respond to that, um, in addition to the gate, the gate and the silk fence is baseline level stuff. If you go any other organization, you're gonna see that stuff. Now, um, you said it was tacky. I mean, we, we can make it blue or red, but then that would probably be an issue too. That wouldn't be tacky. But, um, if you, if you wanna push for it to be blue or red, that would probably be good, you know? But it, it is necessary for us to have it as well as the gate. So, and, um, like Carlos said, it's just for safety, safety and safety only. Otherwise, we wouldn't use the gate. We haven't had it in years. But, um, it's a baseline level thing that's around every single organization from Miami all the way out to Alaska. All right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any more? Um, that was it. He had a card, but he spoke.
I'm yielding, I'm yielding my time back to the audience.
Thank you. We wanna thank all of our, we wanna thank all of our citizens for their comments. Now we will have a proclamation proclaiming October twenty twenty-three as breast cancer awareness, awareness month. Attorney.
Yes, Vice Mayor. Uh, whereas breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains the second leading cause of cancer death among American women. And whereas mammography, which is an X-ray of the breast, is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment is believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer. And whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer, during the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause. And whereas we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors that give us hope of a better future. Now therefore, with support for those who continue to cope with breast cancer, I Keith W. Bab, junior mayor of the city of Pahokee, Florida, on behalf of the city commission, extend our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure. And in so doing hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-three as breast cancer awareness month. An official recognition whereof I hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Pahokee to be affixed to this tenth day of October twenty twenty-three. Keith W. Bab, junior mayor of the city of Pahokee, Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, Commissioner Derek Bolden, Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, and Commissioner Sarah Perez.
Thank you, city attorney. We have the proclamation. Someone here to accept it. And you're setting that board, the.
The vote. The vote.
There's no one that I know.
Okay, thank you. Now we will call for, uh, any questions from the commission on the proclamation? We call for a vote. Madam Currie.
We need a, um.
We need a motion, I'm sorry.
A motion and a second. Who, uh, motioned?
Uh, Vice Mayor, I.
I'm motioning.
Okay.
Okay, I'm watching.
Alrighty. Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Thank you, city for passing. We can add as a vote. Now we have consent agenda. We have three things on our consent agenda. September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, city commission meeting minutes. We have resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-three. And also have resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-four. We call for a motion to pass these unless we have, uh, commission needs to wanna follow in this. We need a motion.
Vice Mayor, I move to accept the consent, consent agenda. September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, commission meeting minutes.
Do we have a second?
Isn't the attorney supposed to read it?
Not the senator. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, Mayor, now second. We have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Bolden, second by Mayor Keith Bab. Call for questions? If not, we'll call Madam Currie.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Vote passed four to one. Now we will have all business. If there are any discussion of existing activities, our previously held events, if any. City time, city manager. No, goodness. Now we move to our public hearings and our ordinances. We have ordinances twenty twenty-three oh seven, which is first reading. Attorney.
And ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida, amending chapter two, article two, section two dash two six F one of the city of Pahokee's code of ordinances entitled city commission discussion to limit debate to two minutes with an opportunity for a one-minute rebuttal, amending article two, section two dash two six G one entitled citizens' rights to prohibit yielding time to another speaker, renumbering and reordering as necessary, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city clerk. City attorney, I'm sorry. City manager, will you give us more explanation?
On this ordinance, it was just a, uh, request of the, um, the commission from the last meeting that we, uh, move forward with, uh, reduction of the, or eliminating the process of allowing the passing of, uh, a citizen's, um, minutes. And then also in, uh, effort to move forward with, uh, a speedier meeting, reduction of, uh, debate and time.
This is first reading, so we will open up. If you have anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this ordinance? Hold on, Robert, um, this Bolden was first.
Gina Bolen, three sixty-six South Barfield Highway. Um.
Where is Gina Wayne? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, three sixty-six South Barfield. I'm here to talk about this ordinance. I don't understand how you can limit a commissioner or the commission for discussion to two minutes. In this, is it two minutes per person, per commissioner? It doesn't say that. Is it two minutes you discuss it once and then there's a minute rebuttal from each one? And then is there two minutes more of discussion and another minute of rebuttal? Or is it just you get two minutes and that's it? You have to vote. You have to make a decision in two minutes whether or not you're in or up? That to me, that's not what I voted for. That's not when I voted for y'all. That's not what I voted for. I voted for you all to make this so that the public can understand what's going on and what you all think and what you feel is the right thing for the community. And I don't know how in two minutes, if it's something that's really important, that y'all can make that decision in two minutes. I would be very disappointed in a commissioner who made that decision in two minutes on an important subject. Thank you.
I don't see how you can give a commissioner two minutes. You give the citizens three minutes. Then you tell me you gonna give a commissioner two minutes. But I understand the commissioner that y'all gonna give two minutes. It's the commissioner that gonna ask the questions, cause y'all ain't gonna ask no question. I don't watch meeting after meeting, Ms. Mervin. You ain't gonna ask no question. You already have it before you get here. And then the people in the community, they never get it because y'all keep it up here. Y'all gonna tell nobody what's going on in the community. But when I was behind y'all, y'all were gonna be so transparent. How are you being transparent telling somebody that they only have two minutes? How are you being transparent setting up there now telling people, oh, you can't get to yield somebody else's time? When I was here with y'all, when I was holding signs for Bad Mervin and Bolden, I can come up here and talk fifty minutes cause Greg Thompson was sitting over there then. Y'all, I can, anybody can yield my time. But now that the shoe is on the other foot, y'all ain't being transparent. Now nobody can't talk. But all of that happened. But do you remember when people used to can talk when y'all was running? Do you remember that? Now, how, do you remember when y'all were set up there and talk all the trash in the world? And then against Greg Thompson when you wouldn't vote on anything? But now since Sarah Gonzalez, I mean, Sarah Perez set up there, asked questions. Y'all would don't ask questions and sit up there and say, she talk, asking too many questions. No, cause y'all ain't gonna ask none. If all y'all had ten minutes a question or two minutes a question, she'll have six. Cause y'all ain't gonna ask none. Y'all should yield y'all time to her. A yield your time to Gonzalez, cause y'all ain't asking no question, cause y'all got too much to hide. You're not being transparent. And don't tell somebody in this community that you are, cause they. And don't tell somebody in this community that you are, 'cause everybody see y'all hiding something. Every meeting, y'all trying to find a way to shut somebody up. You ain't gonna shut me up, 'cause I'm gonna leave out here in a few minutes and go home and go live and talk about how there's some meeting going. Talk about how y'all robbing the town and then blaming white folks for...
We're talking about ordinance twenty twenty-three oh seven.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, ordinance twenty twenty-three oh seven. When you can tell somebody about two minutes, when you can sit up there and that's all you got to say. We talking about an ordinance. But when it come time to talking about calling Chandler Williamson name, you ain't gonna do that.
Like I said, I'm against it too. Because if we do not get somebody to break down what y'all are voting on, we don't know one bit of what is going on. Thanks to Sarah, thanks to Regina, when she did it, people ask questions and we know what is going on. I feel like this is just another way to shut us down as citizens in Pahokee. And I've been coming to this meeting, meetings for years and years. And when, when Chandler came, it all changed. That's when everything changed as to what we could say and what we couldn't say and what we had to write down if we were gonna say it. And now we're right back to where we were. It run everybody in here out, because you know the old saying, you can't fight City Hall? Well, we're back fighting again, because this is, this is our town and we're losing our town. And this town's made up of black, white, Indians, all the immigrants that are here, and everybody else. And it is, I love it when Sarah asks questions. I don't understand when nobody else asks questions. I don't get that.
Hello. Uh, I'm against it also, because I feel like a sitting commissioner should have more than two minutes to speak. That's lesser than the minutes that y'all give the citizens, the citizens to speak on. Y'all give a three minutes to speak. That is not enough time for us to speak about this regular rundown town. Ms. Sarah Perez sits up there and breaks everything down to us. I mean, she breaks it down so the citizens, the citizens, so we can understand what's really going on in this town. Because you all, half of you all sit up there, Ms. Mervin, you sit up there, you tap on your phone all day during a meeting. You don't have nothing to say to the citizens of Pahokee. And I feel like it's crazy for you all to give a commissioner two minutes to speak. Ms. Sarah Perez, I applaud you for breaking everything down to us. That's the only way we understand what's going on in this town. If you don't speak, we don't know anything. And I feel like y'all need to be shaming yourselves sitting up there with this foolishness. Have a great day.
Is there any more comments from the audience? Mr. General. We've closed the ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three for first reading from the public, City Commission. We need to have a motion and a second, please.
Vice Mayor, I move to accept twenty twenty-three oh seven.
Can we get a second? I'll second it. Roll call Madam Curran.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
You didn't call for questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't call for questions?
Questions from the commission. So, I'm sorry.
I, I don't really have any questions. I just have a comment. And it's, and it's really, really sad. Um, and I understand, believe me, that you guys with this home rule, uh, uh, thing that, that, that they passed, I understand that it could be a very, very good thing for the community if the people that you've elected are honest people and want the best for the community. I understand that. But when you have people that continue to do what is not supposed to be done, you know, that's when the abuse comes. And unfortunately, when you have the majority that, that make up the government, you know, that, that votes against the current, against the entire community, because ninety percent of the community backs us up. So, so, you know, with that said, it, I, I know it's gonna pass, because the three of you are gonna vote for it. But I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, it's not gonna stay like this for, for that, that I would tell you. This is not gonna be the end of it.
I have, I have a couple of things I wanna say. Few things is, I want to, the community to know, this is who you voted for, dictators. Trying to tell you how to speak, when and where and why. They don't want you to know things, they don't want things to be questioned. They want things just to be pushed. As an example, they bring in last-minute agendas, last-minute contracts, because they don't want people to know what's going on. I mean, it's in plain view, it's on video, it's, it's documented through YouTube, and there are people watching this. And what's surprising is, if, 'cause if you remember, if you recall, when Ms. Boland was one of the commissioners, was the vice mayor, when we so-called had a majority, even though we didn't agree with you guys, we let you guys speak continuously without any interruption. Now, the same exact group that attacked us and we let y'all speak with no issues, now the tables turn. Now they're trying to silence the same group to a minimum. See, they don't like it when it happens to them. So where's the fairness in this? I believe if you have something to say, whether if I agree with you or not, I'm gonna let you be heard, why? Because you're, you're, we're out here for you guys out here. You have nowhere else to go but to us. So it's our duty to listen to you guys, whether we like it or not. But they don't like to be told anything. They don't like to be confronted, they don't wanna hear. So they wanna limit to what you can say and shut you up. They're violating your civil rights, they don't wanna, they don't wanna be heard, they don't wanna be, they don't wanna hear it from you. Basically, it's like, I don't care who you are, we use you, we play the race game, we got the votes, now we're here, now shut up. That's exactly what it is. And this is, and this is dictatorship. This is nothing but dictatorship.
Is there any more comments? Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Do you have anything you have to say on ordinance twenty twenty-three oh seven? I have a comment. First of all, the comments that are made that were hushing or, or making citizens not speak is incorrect. If, uh, we would not be having discussion from the, uh, citizens, please. That is an incorrect statement. The same ordinance that you see here, any city that you go to, I guess they're, they're, they're quieting up their citizens also. This is the same ordinance. This is not just in the City of Pahokee. You cannot go to your county commission, a meeting, Commissioner Bolden, and talk anytime you get ready. You cannot go to your, your county commission meeting and talk out of turn when they're, when they're discussing their, between their commissions. You cannot stand up and...
That's not what we're voting on.
I'm, I'm, I'm at the floor now, um, Commissioner Perez. I did not, I did not, I did not. I did not interfere when you spoke, uh, with commission comment section. It's a commission comments. It's not a question and answering session. These same commissioners say they live right here in your community also. Going back to the agenda, we had this agenda now for a week and a half, a week and a half. We already done, it's only three things, four things on the agenda. You are, every commissioner in here already know how they're gonna vote. They're gonna either vote up or they're gonna vote it down. So it's not even hushing up not one commissioner for their comments, they can make their comments. Ms. Perez still can ask her questions. We're not saying, oh, you cannot ask questions. That's not even said at all. That, we would not, please, we would not have discussion from, the next interruption, we will ask you to leave. Well, can we please escort him out?
I just wanna correct one thing. We didn't have this a week and a half. We had this as a Wednesday.
We got this last Wednesday before you...
Yeah, last, not a week and a half. Not a week and a half. This day's Tuesday.
Ms. Perez, be protesting. Mr. Gonzalez, be protesting.
I understand. Y'all don't understand. I understand.
No city commission meeting you go to, you have this structure like this. Just look at them, none of them. It's just to bring order and clarity. It's not hush up citizens and it's not to hush up, uh, comments from your commission. That's not the case at all. So we need to stop putting out that narrative that we trying to make them quiet or we hiding something. There's nothing in the city that you can hide. Everything is open. You get the same agenda that I get. There's nothing on here that's hidden, nothing. So, uh, with that being said, Madam Curran, roll call.
You're limiting.
Yeah, you're limiting. For the first time, we finally get it five days prior to the meeting, for the first time.
Madam Curran, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Nope.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Ordinance passed three to two vote. Thank you, commission. Uh, next we have a resolution or a Resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-two. City Attorney.
And why did we skip? Why did we put this in the, in the middle?
Vice Mayor, did you say that these passed on the consent agenda? Because if they passed on consent, if they were under consent agenda, you don't have to read them again. They would pass.
Right, so they, they passed.
Yes.
Yes.
The ordinance you would, but not the, not the resolutions.
Right, yeah, they passed.
No, we didn't, we didn't go over that one.
She just said we don't have to, I was saying, twenty twenty-three sixty-two.
So, the items that are under consent agenda were the, um, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, sixty-three and sixty-four on...
Yes, sixty-three and sixty-four is under consent. We passed those.
Okay, so sixty-two is not?
We on sixty-two.
No, sixty-two is not the resolution.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute an emergency agreement between Climate Control Quality Aluminum, Aluminum Products and the City of Pahokee for the installation of fencing, providing for an effective date.
City Manager, would you give us more clarity on Resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-two?
Yes, ma'am. So in the packet, you have a picture of, uh, Orange Bowl and Bell Glade, which has the four-foot safety fence, uh, in your packet. So it was a, uh, freestanding packet. And then the three bids, you'll see the Climate Control, you see Rayburn, and...
Where's the bid at? The last page where?
So, so the, so the picture, you said you wanted an example, so I took a picture of Orange Bowl and their fencing. Then it was requested that all three quotes come, so thirty-four thousand, that is Climate Control, to put the fencing and to, uh, properly install, uh, the fencing with concrete and remove our, uh, turf and put it back correctly. So you have Rayburn Company, and then theirs was for twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-three cent. And then JV Fence Sales, and that was for thirty-three thousand.
What are those bids? Wasn't this supposed to go off the bid?
So... Sorry. And that's the Orange Bowl and how their fencing.
Request for quotes.
Yes.
Okay, so, so you're requesting for quotes?
Open up a question. Is there any more comment on the...
That, that's it, ma'am.
Okay, we need a motion and a second. So open up a question.
Which one?
Twenty twenty-three sixty-two.
Make a motion that we accept, um, resolution. Oh, my ways, it's all over the place. Twenty twenty-three sixty-two for discussion.
Call for a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perez, second by Commissioner Bolden. Open up a question.
Yeah, so, um, we have three quotes. So what did you do in RFQ?
No, I, uh, we solicited the, uh, companies to come in and give us bids.
RFQs, which is normally done so that you know more or less how much it's gonna cost before you put it out for bid. But this is another emergency, right?
It's an emergency agreement. Yes.
Is that gonna be the way of the future now? Everything's gonna come up for, everything that, that should have been done ten years ago is now coming up for, um, emergency?
The last home game, if I'm correct, we had incidents of, uh...
I know what happened last week, um, and I know that we need it. And I'm not against the fence going up, so don't try to twist this and, and out in the community. Because if anybody loves and cares for this community, especially the youth, it's me. My, my thing is that, first of all, it should have been done when the, when the football field was built, just like the scoreboard. But like everything in the past wasn't done, and we don't wanna talk about it, we just wanna forget about it. Because they wait on the next administration and the turnaround, you know, to, to, to try to, you know, capitalize on these things. So, this I'm not gonna put on you. I don't know when you knew, uh, I heard that you knew about a year ago that they came to you and asked you about the fence and wanted to put the fence. And now it's coming as an emergency. So which, which, which one are we, are we picking one or what, what are we supposed to be doing?
So staff's, uh, recommendation is Climate Control.
Is that the cheapest one?
No, ma'am.
So why are we going with, uh, with one more expensive?
So they're more thorough and they have a track record with the city of doing great work.
So this is a vendor that has done work for the city before?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the sole reason why you're doing it at a higher cost to the city?
Well, theirs is more detail, uh, of what they're gonna do and how they're gonna go about the application of installing the fence.
So who gave them the scope of work? Did they, did you guys give them the scope of work? Because if you give the same, the same scope of work to all three vendors, I don't see how, uh, one is more thorough than the other.
So with the different quotes, the, the first, um, difference was the thirty-three thousand is they gonna dig into the, uh, turf, well, uh, the grass, because it's on the other side of the, uh, the concrete block. And then they're gonna pour cement in with the, uh, um, the fencing. The cheaper quote, they wanted to take the, the, uh, the bars and go into the concrete. So it was cheaper to do it that way. But then when you think about it, if all the kids and the adults are leaning and pushing on that, that fence over a period of time, it gonna loosen itself and then eventually it'll come out of the concrete. So the cement in the ground with the, uh, poles make it more sturdier. And then the different type of, uh, uh, fencing that they're using is a more quality fence for, uh, weight and, and, uh, endurance when people pushing up against it, jumping the fence and things of that nature. So it's more expensive. So it's more expensive to do it the way that this company is doing it because they use the concrete and then they're going into the ground with, with the, uh, poles.
And where, what, where, what concrete you talking about? That they wanna put it?
So, so when they put the, the poles in the ground, they, they gonna dig a hole, stick the poles in the ground.
Yeah, that's the way you put a fence.
Yeah, and then they gonna pour concrete.
Yeah.
To stabilize it.
Yeah.
The cheaper way, they didn't wanna dig the hole in the ground and do the concrete. They was gonna take the poles and they was gonna put a base at the bottom and, and, and put, uh, bolts in the concrete itself.
What concrete? Where's the concrete?
There's a concrete around the, uh, the, uh, football field. Where, where they put the artificial turf, all the way around the field, there's concrete around it.
But that's like the sidewalk, isn't it? Isn't that where you walk around the field?
No, no, we don't have sidewalks.
But I mean, that's, that's between the bleachers and, and the sideline.
The end of the artificial turf is concrete.
There's a crown around it.
Yeah, all the way around it. It's, it's about a foot wide, all the way around it. The cheaper way, they wanted to take the poles and get a basin and then drill bolts into the concrete. But over a period of time, it, 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 it won't be durable. So the way that we're, uh, having it done with the poles in the ground and the cement, uh, is more durable that way. So that, that, that's the purpose. That's why the cost is a little higher with the thirty-three because they got to pay for the concrete.
Commissioner, any more questions?
Where, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm asking questions. Where on here does it say about, um, you know, how they gonna install the fence?
Mr. Manager? Through the, through the Vice Mayor? If you look at the very last page, all of you, this is an attachment to the agreement. And this is a, they gave a diagram. And on the diagram, they have the, um, various type of, um, ways that they're gonna do it in terms of how, how deep the post is going to, going to go, um, where it's going to go, um, what type of vinyl is gonna be put on it? What type of fence is going to have? They give the dimensions of it as well as, um, in relation to where the, where it is with the bleachers. They give how they're going to, um, access the job along with the amount. So all of it is on the very last page of your agenda packet.
You talking about this?
That is the, that's what gives you the.
Okay, where does it say how they're gonna put the, they're gonna mount the fence? Cause I don't, I don't see it.
So the fence would be, the, the fence come six feet tall. So two feet of the fence would be in the ground and the other four would be from the ground up. So it'll be four feet tall, but two feet would go in the ground. And then once they put it in the ground, they put the concrete around it to stabilize it.
That's what says one and a half to two feet.
Yeah.
Ground.
Okay, and, and the other company is, it, their fence is not six feet and they're going four on the ground?
All fences would be four feet, but like I said, the, the one company wanted to bolt the fence into the concrete. And we didn't think that that would be durable. You talking, we, we looking for this fence to last fifteen, twenty, as long as we want. But if we got it bolted in the concrete and then the kids are jumping the fence or running up against the fence and things of that nature, at some point, it'll give. But I think it'll last, uh, more. The, the eight-foot fence is in the ground with concrete around it. So I, I think that that would be the most durable way for us to utilize that fence.
So you think to feed in, uh, in the muck?
Yes, with concrete around it.
Yeah.
Yeah. They, they, they gonna pour the cement and it'll stabilize it in the muck.
Question.
Yes.
Is it gonna come with the padding or is there something else besides the fencing?
Uh, that's something, uh.
Ralph said he's, uh, working on getting a, uh, either blue or black padding on the fence at no additional charge. Cause he went up, he actually went to, he was the only one of the three companies that went up to Orange Bowl and looked at it. And he really liked the padding.
And Orange Bowl have the exact same things and it's, it's, it's needed.
Any more questions from the Commissioner? If not, we'll call Madam Court.
Commissioner Perez?
I'm only voting for this because it's for the football and I know how important it is. But we're talking six thousand dollars difference. I don't see what, I don't, I don't, I don't, whatever, just, I'm not gonna talk anymore.
Need you to.
I said yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-three passed unanimous, five whole votes. Now we have new business. If there's any presentation by the city manager of activities or upcoming events, if any.
Okay, the, um, under new business, a couple of things. First one, uh, I passed out potential, uh, capital improvement projects. Mayor, I also sent it electronically as well. So you should, you should be able to pull up your C email and see the, uh, potential legislative, uh, things. So I have a two-page, um, document that has, uh, the same one we gave to Mr. Wilson about potential projects throughout all of Pahokee that we could use as a, a model or say what, what we gonna do. So I, in the email I sent to, uh, the Commissioners this evening, I asked for your top five needed by Thursday. So, uh, just wanted to point it out, it's that time of year and the, uh, our legislators are asking for our list. Then also, just an update on the memorial benches. You, you have the document there where you see Dian Walker, uh, the bench and how it's gonna look. So the four benches, and then you have the next one, Ms. Ethel Williams, Storm of nineteen twenty-eight Survivor. Then you have the Salvatores, Lucille, and Iris as well. So just wanted to give you an update on the memorial things as well. I'm open to any discussion or direction for legislative priorities, but at least, uh, I got something in to your hands so that you can meditate on it.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, ever since we met and we known each other, we discussed about our Veterans Memorial Park. Up to this day, not once have I heard you talk about it. Even though we talked about it in your office multiple times, I still up to this day have not heard you talk about it, um, with the Commission. What's the holdup on that?
So I asked, where do you want it? My sug- okay. Now initially, when I came here, you had spoken about Commissioners Park or, um, something freestanding. So I haven't gone over and looked at the place you suggested, uh, but Carlos and I are, are planning on going. But, uh, that's all. I, I don't have a problem pulling any triggers or making a decision, but it's been your thing. So I just stand down and wait to hear what you wanna do.
Is that it? City Attorney?
All right, yes, ma'am.
We have any questions from the, um, Commission? And now we move on to Report of the Mayor.
You requesting this money from Tallahassee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We have the Report of the Mayor. Mayor Bab?
Report?
Yes, we are in Report.
No.
No report from the, Report of the City Manager?
Thank you. Just real quick as, uh, um, going through, oh. It was brought to my attention, we had an error on, uh, the date. We had said November.
But I was right, but there's another, there's another conference.
So in the minutes, I saw that we did November fourteenth. It shouldn't have been fourteenth, it should've been the twenty-eighth, right?
Actually, no, that's a different meeting.
So we're gonna have no meetings in November?
You guys are going to a conference, that's not my decision.
So what we need to do, we need to vote for November. We need to find a date that all of us will be here to have a.
Yeah, I, I can bring it back.
Bring that back.
Uh, so that we at least meet once by the charter for the month. So let me do that, since, uh, we have conflicts on both the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, right? So I will.
So we need to vote to, um, cancel November twenty-eighth meeting?
Yes.
City Commission, so we need a motion. We will go, we'll be out to our, our legislation conference on November twenty-eighth. So we need a motion and a second to cancel November twenty-eighth City Commission meeting.
Vice Mayor, I move to cancel the November twenty-eighth Commission meeting.
Can I get a second? I'll second it. So we got a motion by Commissioner Bolden, second by Vice Mayor Mervin. Roll call, Madam Court.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonz- I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
And.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Thank you. Now I'll bring back, uh, some dates for November. All right, just to, um, all right, so. Follow-up, uh, Everglades Town Homes getting started this week on ground clearance. Uh, I'm sorry I put grow clearance, but it's ground clearance. And they have to determine, uh, how they're gonna, uh, prepare the muck or if they have to go through the muck. So they're doing an evaluation and I can have Kevin come in at our next meeting, uh, the site superintendent, and give us an update on how things are going. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. Uh, Marina Floating Docks repairs underway. They're starting in Dock, uh, F and they're moving towards E and D. So they're just going from the north end, working their way back. We completed, uh, grass abasement, uh, in Glade Citizen Village last week. There's a lot of high grass there. Um, the crews, the public works was able to reduce some of that there. Uh, I have to get scheduling on what's next in the Glade Citizen Village. Staff is working on completing East Lake Village Street signage. Uh, we need do not enter signs. We need a couple more one-way signs dead end, uh, all those things. So we, we're trying to, uh, learn our equipment, our sign machine, so we can get those things up here real soon. Uh, on the swimming pool, we are pending final touch-ups on painting and the bathrooms at the, uh, pool and, um, on the outside exterior doors. And then we're pending receiving pool equipment. So we gonna have chairs, lounge chairs, and then we're gonna have two, um, lifeguard chairs, uh, there as well. Annexation update, we are working with Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council to develop a comprehensive annexation plan as well as what I had, uh, talked about the last meeting, the year, and the comprehensive planning and zoning map updates. Uh, under our capital improvement projects, I have attached here, uh, that and events. So when you get a moment, McClure Reconstruction Project, we are currently, um, in the design phase. WGI, um, Engineering is the survey team that will be on site for the next couple of weeks as part of the design for the McClure Reconstruction, uh, project. Uh, Barfield Construction Highway Project, uh, Robert's not here to do presentation, but I'm going out tomorrow and meet with, uh, the powers that be for Russell to understand where they're at and what's the next processes, uh, along, uh, Barfield Highway. Uh, in particular, I'll be looking at, um, the intersection of Barfield and East Main and where all the delays are there. So I'll, I'll be able to give you an update. And then East Lake Village Storm Improvement Project, we're, uh, almost at a hundred percent completion there. Final inspections have been requested and we're pending, uh, approval from our building official. The Phase Four Resurfacing Project, um, I know we wanna do ITB, uh, thought this week it'll be going out for that. And the MLK, uh, Improvement Project, uh, I guess Wednesday, uh, tomorrow, uh, it'll be going into the paper. And here's all the things that are listed under it for new construction, additional parking, fixed decaying pavement, installation of new age-appropriate playground and outdoor fitness equipment, restoration and re, uh, replacement of recreational shelters, installation of new LED security lighting, installation of a new walking path, remodeling of the baseball and soccer fields, and installation of new seats and bleachers at the fields. Also just to update, on the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four NEAT grant has, uh, been awarded to our city for the purchase and installation of benches, purchase and installation of trash receptacles, MLK, um, parks, basketball courts, walking trails and other park improvements there. And then events coming up is the Fall Festival, which is, uh, Tuesday, October thirty-first, from five-thirty to eight-thirty, uh, at our, uh, sports complex is three sixty East Main. We're gonna have a veteran celebration in November, November ninth, Thursday, November ninth, from ten to noon. Uh, that'll be at the flag post like we did, uh, last year, oh, on the last page. And Thanksgiving Senior, uh, Citizen Turkey Giveaways, that'll be, uh, November twenty-first. Lieutenant Abie, are you gonna, you guys, um, are you gonna do your turkeys?
So we spoke with the governor, are still just waiting for the tires and loose ends.
Okay. All right, so PBSO turkeys. Okay. Sorry for disturbing you guys. And then pretty much, um, you get into Christmas time, December eighteen. Um, six to seven-thirty is the holiday toy giveaway. And then January thirteenth is MLK Parade and Extravaganza. So just wanted to touch base and that, that ends my report, ma'am.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Man, I'm sorry. Report of the City Attorney?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney. Now we're down to future agenda items of the Commission, if any.
This is me, Vice Mayor. Sorry.
That's right. If not, we have Commission, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, uh, I know some of us aware of, uh, a little bit of conflict that we had, uh, this past weekend, um, regarding youth football. I don't know what can be done, uh, but, and, and I'm all for, uh, everyone having their separate entities, that's fine. But, uh, what I am concerned about is, you know, as a teacher, some of the, maybe, I don't know if there's conflict, uh, between these adults, but some of that stuff is actually impacting our children. And we're hearing this even in school, among them. I don't know what can be done. I know a lot, there are a lot of people who are emotional about. Um, I don't know what can be done, I know a lot, there are a lot of people who are emotional about this weekend. Um, I'm not on either side of this, I just want, you know, what's best for our children, so if there is a way to get the adults together, the coaches together, from the different sides, uh, and we actually, you know, like I said, I'm all for people having their own programs and running their own programs their way. However, I would like for some of our issues to be kind of ironed out. I don't know how we can make that happen, but I think that that's something that we need. Some of the coaches did reach out to me, and they said, um, that's a conversation that they would like to have. At the end of the day, it's about our children, um, and we don't want adult issues trickling over into children and it becoming a problem between them. So, I don't know what can be done about that, but I think a meeting of the coaches at some point, not necessarily, you know, it's not about arguing, um, it's about solutions, and I think we need to set a good example for our children and show them how conflict is supposed to be resolved. So, if... Would, would you like to speak on that, sir?
Sure.
Okay.
Not.
Is that, that's not?
No.
Okay. Alright, so...
Yeah, I wish we could. But I could, um, pick it back off, and, but the thing is, I, I would hope and I thought that would come, I just thought maybe I was coming earlier. But then if they could sit down and we can get the powers-to-be from the other entity, the powers-to-be from, uh, Parks and Rec with the city, uh, manager, that they can work that, you know, work it out, so whatever can be worked out, you know? Cause I think the only thing that, uh, that really stopped it from, from, at first I said, well, I didn't see a problem, um, with it, but when I looked at it, then it come to a liability issue, which I know that they said that Park Warner does have insurance that will cover the kids, but when you have other entities that's coming from other cities, that wouldn't cover them. So, if anything would have happened on that field at that time, and it rang that they, it would have, it's more of a liability issue. So, I, I would hope and, and hope that whatever powers-to-be, whatever the directors from, you know, the Park Warner, the directors from Parks and Rec can set up a meeting, set up a meeting with the city manager and see what can be worked out as far as an inter-local agreement. That's what's not happening, cause I, from my understanding, you have one with the county and you have one with the school. So, if, if it is a local agreement, that protects you and that protects also the, the, the city.
And at the very least, have a...
Um, statement, I mean, it's, it's just, like, like you stated, with the kids, they, they are classmates. So, when they hear the outside thing from adults or whatever, it, it trickles, it, it is trickling down to them, and it's becoming an issue. Um, oh, we play for the city, oh, we play for Park Warner, and, and it's becoming like, you're splitting these kids up, but then on Monday through Friday, they sit with each other in school. At the end of the day, all those kids gonna be playing together one day.
Exactly, that's why, that's why I'm thinking the inter-local agreement comes, and, you know, kids don't understand the business part of it. They just wanna play. But when the adults can say, you know, look, we're gonna work this out so where we can all can work together, you know, whether, I don't care whether it's Park Warner, I don't care whether it's city, whether it's river, but we can all work it together. That's where the adults comes in at. You know, the kids just gonna hear, go back and say what they hear. You know, with some of the stuff was, is not true stuff, it's, but they don't know, they just repeat what they hear.
That's, that's one conversation that needs to be had. But all the conversation, I just came to offer maybe a suggestion, you know, moving forward, you know, maybe.
But, but we gotta, we cannot continue, but the thing is, uh, uh, Mr. Crawford is, that's why I say, let's set up a meeting with the, with, with, uh, the entities from Park, the entities from, with the city manager, cause I think it's been over a year, a week or so now, have y'all reach out to the city to set up a meeting as of yet? Okay, so, just, and city manager, if you can please get with, um, try to set up a meeting with you, the director there, and see what can be worked out, so it won't be no liability issue on the city. That's all, and then everybody's happy.
And I think that, at the very least, we should have a plan of action, uh, for emergency situations, um, regarding the field. At the very least, as long as the city is, uh, covered in terms of liability.
Our teams are, have a liability, our every team have, will have a liability after him.
Okay.
Do you not have, uh, an agreement with the city already?
No.
No?
That's the story that, that's the conversation that needs to be had, I don't think. There is one, but my thing is, we're still citizens of all, uh, I still pay taxes here.
Right.
You know, my nephew, my kids, you, the same kids.
Wait a minute, but we can't, we can't, I understand you wanna talk on it, Mr. Crawford, but here, you know,
So, can...
it's not, it's not the place, but the thing is, let's set it up like the, but we know, we keep saying the kids, but paperwork still have to be in place. You know, you have to, you know, yeah, we have kids, but it's just the adults have to put the right paperwork in place. Just like with Park Warner, you could go out there without putting something in place. Even with Park Warner, there was something you had to put in place. So, it's always just, yeah, we know it's the kids, but we can't always say, oh, you're stopping the kids, we're not stopping the kids, we gotta stop saying that. We're not putting, putting division in the kids. We have to do decent and orderly, we have to do by policy. And it has to be, it's local agreement, the whole thing is, in the local agreement. In local agreement gives access to whatever it be for an emergency basis that you have to, whatever the situation y'all work out, but long there'll be something that covers the, everybody. You know, that's, that's, it just have to be some things in place, it's not stopping anything. It's just, let's put it in place, set up a meeting, that's, nothing that cannot be worked out, I don't think.
When can you meet? When can you meet, Mr. Lucas? Set up the meeting right now, cause he's been trying to do it for a week, or two weeks.
Mr. Crawford, would you like to come to the podium, that way he could be heard?
That's not, that's not the place for that one, you cannot call.
I mean, you're speaking with him already.
No, no, I'm not speaking, I'm just saying, set up a meeting, Mr. City Manager, will you reach out to Park Warner, wherever the powers-to-be of Park Warner, you know, I'm not whether, uh, I know it's, I'm Mr. Crawford Crawford, but...
Yeah.
You know, reach out to Mr. Hergreth, reach out to, uh, Brian, I forget, Mr. Big Show, Brian, you know, and see if you set up a meeting. And then, you, you know, with your director, whatever meetings that you can have, just, hopefully that could be ASAP.
Do you know when that's gonna be, Mr. Lucas?
I'll call him tomorrow.
He's gonna call you tomorrow.
More, any more future agenda, whatever this is coming. So, now we have, um, there's one thing that the unearers for the Veterans Day.
Yeah, I need...
They need to, each one of us need to choose, was it two? I think it was two last time, each one chose two. So, each commission need to choose two, uh, unearers for the Veterans Day and submit them to, I would say, the city clerk.
By when?
I think it's, is it Adams?
It says ASAP.
It's Adams.
Yes, submitted to George and Adams, so, um...
Mayor Bab, did you hear that, about the two honorary, um, veterans?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So, uh, I would need it by the thirty-first. Yeah. Yeah, because...
And also, we need judges for the Fall Festival, the trunk of tree, uh, cost, uh, costume contest. So, we need volunteers, whether it be from the commission, whether it be from the community, we need volunteers, and I guess they will get in touch also with Ms. Adams on that. Man, well, not even, I'm sorry, not in church. Now, we have commission comments and for the future good of the order. We will start with... Uh, Commissioner Perez?
Okay, um, the first thing that I, that I wanna, um, touch on is the ARPA money on the, the rounds that we went for the different, uh, for, for, uh, the housing repair, the, the rent, whatever, all the things that, that we took out. I know that we did not use the entire amount of the money. What are we planning to do? Are we planning to go out again until that money is used for that purpose? Or what are we doing with that money?
So, I, I will, uh, reassess those dollars and bring back a recommendation of moving forward with spending. Uh, priorities, uh, you guys have said is the Marina and infrastructure. Um, and then also, um, we didn't really spend much on mental health and a couple of other things, but I can do assessment and, and bring it back.
With the to, with the money that we've used and the money that's remaining.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, another thing that I wanna address is, um, I know that Parks and Recreation received several grants, uh, during the year, and I kept asking, what was the grant for, what was it gonna be used for? And I know one of them, if I'm not mistaken, was forty thousand, and they got another one for twenty. Uh, so, why are we not paying the, the fence with the money that was, um, awarded to them?
So, under Parks and Rec, I allocated forty thousand dollars so that the hundred and twenty-five kids that participate in the city league could have a helmets, proper helmets, reconditioned helmets, shoulder pads, and other items. So, I used through you guys' permission to do forty thousand. Now, they got other monies that had came in through various grants and, uh, uh, ELC and, and Early Learning Coalition and all those things, but I can get you a breakdown of those things, that's, that's not a problem. And then, the what I'm paying for, for the, um, fence, the inner fence, I'm using Surtax money, cause that's an asset. So, there's where I'm using that money from.
Okay, um... East Lake. Um, Mr. Williamson said that whenever he went over the East Lake project, he says that a fence was gonna be part of the project. Um, what happened to that?
When who?
Chandler Williamson.
I wouldn't know what Chandler or, or what was going on then, uh, that was before my time.
But, I mean, a grant is paperwork, and why did he say that if it wasn't like part of the grant or part of the project?
Uh, I, I will check into it, no problem, ma'am.
I'll check into it. Uh, okay, McClure Road, ever since, um, uh, the mayor, vice mayor, and Mr. Bolden, uh, were elected, we've had Ms. Adams come up here and said that McClure Road was in the design stages. How long does it take to design it? Because I've been here three years, so I wanna know. Have we been, like, kinda told a story, since I cannot say, well, you've been, you know, we've been told a lie?
I, I gotta think about what you're asking. McClure Road, we're in the re, uh, the design phase of that, and, uh, I can give you an update on that. Uh, I'll, I'll make sure I take the lead and, and get all the appropriate answers of timelines, so that way, there's no more confusion or hints of inappropriate...
Oh, okay, design, let's talk about the design. Uh, the design is so that you could prepare the scope of work to put it out for RFP, or, uh, explain to me how that works.
Um, you're pretty sharp, so I, I know you understand what that means. Um, I'm not gonna get in the weeds with you.
Well, I know that we, I know that we've been built for engineering services for McClure Road, so, you know, do we, do we have engineering services, which is supposed to be also designing all that? Or are we doing that again? Uh, how, how, how does it work?
So, WGI is our, uh, you... Timelines was during your time when Bolden and the two of you were in lead, so, you know, you changed out engineering.
What was that got to do with it? You have one before and you got one after.
Wait a minute, it has everything, it has everything to do with it, and you know that, you know this.
Really?
You wanna get messy right at the end.
I don't wanna get messy, we're talking about transparency here, okay? There's too many different stories, I'm trying to get the right one, that's all I'm trying to do.
My suggestion is to, um...
Why would you have, excuse me, but I'm talking and I'm not finished.
I'm gonna talk on your behalf, wait a minute, if we can bring WGI to the commission, I know they were out there today. If we could bring someone from WGI, we're not the engineers, but they are, and they can answer, uh, Commissioner Perez's, uh, questions.
Okay.
They will be more, they will give you more update, where they at, and what, and the design.
My question is, why do we already have, uh, billing on McClure Road when, when we're now doing the design? So, why would we build for engineering work? From twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
You fired the engineering company. Brandenburg did that.
What's that got to do with it?
It has everything to do with it.
Mr. Lucas, again, we're in, um...
You asked in a loaded question you already know the answer to.
Mr. Lucas.
No, I don't, I thought it wouldn't be asked.
Commissioner Lu, that's not answering, that's not getting over, let's bring in WGI so they can answer your, your question. If you need to talk with finance, talk with finance as far as where payments or whatever, like, but that's not, this is, he's not, is not answering.
Okay, okay, Vice Mayor Mervin, uh, so that you know, I have requested, you know, all this information for months and months and months, so when you guys come up here and, and, so everybody could hear you how proper and how things should be done and what you should be doing, so that everybody knows when I come up here, I have exhausted all other venues, okay? All other venues, so, I, I, I'm sick of being up here, and I'm, I'm the aggressive, I'm the one that talks, but you know what, I'm not gonna back down, I'm not gonna back down, cause this is gonna stop, okay? You still got McClure Road in design. Um, another thing that I wanna address, the, um, uh, ex-city manager Thompson, okay? My belief is, the rules and the policies are across the board for everybody. If he did something wrong, then he did something wrong, and, you know, he needs to attend to the consequences. I'm not here to, to, to sugarcoat anybody. I did my job when I had to do it, and it, and it was, uh, what the city attorney suggested at the time, okay? At the time, I take responsibility for, yes, voting to put him in. I did not know nothing about no ATVs, nor did I bid on it, nor did I have nothing to do. I take responsibility for that. But I don't sit up here and keep voting and voting and voting for corruption and things that we knew that we're not supposed to vote. So, I do not appreciate any ex-commissioner that sat up here forty years doing the same thing and voting, voting the corrupted way. So, yes, I am gonna say it, I am gonna say it, because Chandler Williamson not only gave a hundred and fifty... Because Chandler Williamson not only gave a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Techno Marine without the commission's approval, okay? And how he got it? He got it because his rubber stamp, Mayor Bab's name on that check. That's how they did it. And all they had to do is look at the city meeting so that they could see that not even King knew that he had done that. When he turned around and said, you voted, you signed for it, that's where the rubber stamp came on. But you guys played hush-hush, you know? You made a deal, the commission made a deal, the city attorney represented you guys and made a deal with, with the, with the state attorney, okay? There was another sixteen thousand dollars that was unaccounted for. And the only thing that he was supposed to pay back was the fifty-eight hundred dollars that supposedly he kept using the card, because he looked like his, but he didn't notice that he was using the city card. That's the stupid excuses that, that, that he could give on the paperwork. So don't tell me about transparency, 'cause I don't know transparency. And, and as far as, 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 as the other thing, okay? If, if it's an interlocal agreement, whatever needs to happen, it needs to happen. Because yes, they're all, we're not here because of, of Crawford or because the city or because of anybody. We are here, okay? We are here to look out for the entire community. And those kids, they, they go to school together, they play together, and then one day they're gonna reunite again. They have as much right to this field as the kids from the recreation department. Because it's a public, a public entity. It doesn't belong to the commission, it doesn't belong to the city manager, it doesn't belong to not one person. I remember even when the adults were able to go out there and practice the, uh, basketball in the afternoon. Not nobody could, could, could go in the, in the gym unless you paid for it. But that conversation, I'm gonna have it in the county to see if they spent all that money there so that only the recreation department could take control of the entire thing. And the only way that you could use it is if you, you pay for it. And even then, you can't even use it.
Is that, you're done, Commissioner Perez?
Glad you're amused. Yes, that concludes mine.
Commissioner Bolden.
Before, um, she moves on, I just wanna put on the record, I don't know what she's talking about when she said the city attorney made a deal with the state attorney. I have no, I don't know if she's talking about the, Mr. Brandenburg. I have no idea. So I just wanted to put that on the record, because my reputation is very important to me. Thank you.
Because whoever the city attorney was at the time, so the shoe fits where it.
Actually, it wasn't me.
Okay.
Commissioner Bolden.
Um, I really don't have much to say. Um, only thing is, like, when it comes down to the parks, like I said earlier, I do think it's very important for us to have park attendance. Um, as far as the budget goes, to be honest with you, it's already in there. If you read the final rule, um, concerning ARPA funds, uh, there is, um, you are allowed to create government jobs or local municipal jobs, uh, with the use of ARPA funds. That's actually in the final rule. Um, so if that's something that we need to do, uh, to not only protect ourselves, but also to allow our citizens to have full access, um, I think that's something that we should, uh, definitely look into. That's it.
Okay, um, first thing I wanna start off with is, it, first thing I wanna start off with is, um, the case with Mr. Greg Thompson. You know, I didn't know nothing about the four-wheelers. And the only thing that I would take full responsibility is with bringing him here. Not bring him, but voting him to be the city manager. I didn't know nothing about the four-wheelers. I'm making that very clear. However, whatever charges are pitting against him, that's between the law and our city attorney. Let them handle the situation. That's among them. My hands are clean with the four-wheeler. However, the same people who are trying to make a big issue of this with, uh, Mr. Williamson for, for thousand, was it like four thousand? If I'm correct, two or four thousand dollars. Keep in mind, when Chandler Williamson was here, vehicles disappeared. A hundred, I don't know if it's a hundred fifty, a hundred twenty thousand dollars given, was given to a company that didn't even start a project, disappeared. Not one dime was spent on the project, given away. No one's ma, no one's basically raising hell over that. But they're raising hell over four, two or four thousand dollars with Mr. Greg Thompson. Now, what I find very interesting is that the same people who supported Mr. Williamson are keeping their mouth shut when it comes towards Mr. Williamson. But when it comes to Greg Thompson, they're telling the community, let's go get him, let's go get them. Hold Regina, Sarah, and Gonzalez, uh, responsible for, bring on the heat. I put up with this for more than two years. I heard it out in the street. Officers know it very well. I get it from all over the community, but guess what? We have people here who's supposed to be church people who slither a lot throughout the city, spreading all these things about us, but yet they're hiding their hands when it comes to Mr. Williamson because they're a part of that situation. Now, I'm not throwing dirt on your names out there. Each individual knows who I'm talking about. So, you know exactly what you're doing. Now, you're in the wrong. You say you're a church-going person. That's your personal life. But don't come up to, over here to the commission and telling people that we're in the wrong when you know very well what was going on for more than six years. Okay, so don't come play Miss, Mr. or Mrs. innocent out here. Four thousand compared to over a hundred thousand dollars. Come on, really? I'm not in law enforcement. I'm not an attorney. I'm not a state attorney, nor the city attorney, nor the manager. Let them handle, let the IG, the state attorney, and our city attorney handle the situation the way it is. If he's guilty, he's guilty. I can't speak for him. The same way I can't speak for, uh, Chandler Williamson. But the IG also has reports in reference to Chandler Williamson. And you, uh, for the, for more than, more than two years, after, as a matter of fact, after we won the election, we're talking about the old, the IG reports. A lot of people saying they're lies, till some individuals actually got the actual reports from the IG themselves, then they see it was not a lie. And a lot of that stuff, all these, a lot of these rumors were started by people on the commission that don't like us, and they know who they are. Now, what you see going on today, the same group that supported that group are here, the tables turn. Now they're trying to shut them up for obvious reasons. They hate being told that they, that they, they took advantage of the people in the most vulnerable time. So I'd say to the community, wake up, keep your ears open, open your eyes. Don't deny what you see and what you hear. You have common sense. You're smarter than that. And when they're talking about votes around, the election's right around the corner, vote for whoever you wanna support. That's your American right. I'm not gonna try to, uh, persuade you to vote any other way. Just look at all the meetings, look what's going on around the city, and just make a wise, this, a wise choice. It's your life, it's your choice. Your vote counts. And that's all I have to say.
Mayor Bab?
No comments.
I just have, uh, a few comments. And, um, one, one, clear up one, um, mistruth. When they talked about the, uh, the money that was given and, and the city attorney gave, uh, approval and stamped with the mayor's, uh, name is very incorrect. You have to remember, we had an attorney, uh, Attorney Brandenburg that was sitting there, nothing, he drew up the paper, wasn't nothing done out of Mr. Brandenburg knowing. That's why he fought the case, the city of Pohokee won the case, and then the company filed bankruptcy. But he fought the case, we won the case for them to pay the, uh, the money back. That, so that's just a miss, uh, uh, just wanna clear up that so we don't keep, continue to putting false information out in, into the community. And another thing, I don't think, no one sat up here is against working anything out with, as with the local, interlocal agreement. I think we all stated that it should be something work that even can be worked out. We just say, set up a meeting and meet with the city attorney. That's, I mean, the city manager. That's what, that's where we have to start from there. Okay, so we have to come to the table and make an agreement. Okay, um, but the, uh, the other comment I wanted, you see this scooter that sits in front of the commission tonight? I was at a meeting this morning and it called the adaptive city. Like, will we be adapted into what's going on? We all can see that we, here in Pohokee, almost twenty to twenty-five years behind what's going on, just forty miles ahead of us. When I was a little girl, I know who ain't remember, we made these things out of two-by-folds, uh, wagon wheel. But times have changed. And so the thing that I wanna talk, it's just change. We have to take our blinders off. We have to take our, uh, change our mindset. And for our city to be able to move and to a direction, we gotta be able to adapt what's going on. We cannot continue to sit up here, 'cause to me, signing tonight, we're, we're not focusing on issues in our community. We're focusing on fighting the people power that be's up here. We're only policymakers. That's all we are, is policymakers. We don't build buildings, we don't give permits, we don't build McDonald's, we don't build houses, we don't build schools, we don't build any of that. All we do is sit here and make policies to be, make our community welcoming for investors to come and want to invest here in our community. The city job is to make sure you have water, sewer, uh, PBSO, fire, that take our infrastructure. That's why we have a list of priorities where we go to the state to get funding for to build our infrastructure. We all want the best for our community. We're still digging up gavenized pipes in the city of Pohokee in twenty twenty-three. Gavenized pipes, while we got, other cities over there have roadways, they have, uh, electric, uh, cars, they have buses driving themselves. This is the fight that we need to be putting all this energy in, fighting, go to the state, that we're not a city that gonna be left behind. Just what's best for, we are not the other coast, we are part of Palm Beach County. Just what goes over there, but we continue to look back at what did twenty years ago, thirty years ago. We're not going anywhere. We're not gonna go anywhere, but we need to put all this energy that we have into a city, say, you know what? We, we deserve to have, right now, if you ride through our city, if that dike was to break, we'll even have stormwater where the water will run off if it does, we would flood out of here. That's the fight that we, we're in. We all want the best for the city. But we have to stop with the, with the stuff that we talking about, um, uh, uh, fraud and we're talking about corruption. There's no corrupt, where, where's the corrupt? Everything is here, is open. There's nothing hidden, no agenda hidden, no contract hidden. Everything is here, the same, unless you got a different one than what we read. But every contract comes to the city. Everyone comes here, if it read, is read in public, you can get a copy of it, anyone could. We need to stop doing that and stop trying to fight each other. And let's fight the issues and power that be that's out there, that's hindering us from getting what we're getting. Could we continue doing this, they're not gonna release any funds to us. Nothing. So, but, but if you have all the corruption, hey, report it. If you have something that say Mervin houses built from the city, find it, bring it, bring it to the open. Bring it to the, my husband worked two jobs and so does I. I work every day. But the thing about, if you, if you find that, bring it out, report it. Please, call PBS on me, if you, if you think I got anything that wasn't belong to me from the city of Pohokee. Call. Dig it up. It doesn't matter. But we need to try to work together. Let's put this energy on, working together. It doesn't matter who sits up here. I don't care if you change the whole commission, but, um, here or not, we still just policymakers. Not one of us, not one of us can bring anything to this city unless we do it together as a body. That's it. We're just policy and procedure makers. So let's try to get some policies, let's try to get see these, these buildings that we have in the city. Let's get some, some of these, these people that own these buildings, own property, clean up their properties. We, five of us can't do it, but we got six thousand residents. All, if, all of us plays a part. All of us has to clean around what we can make our city, make our city what it is. Five commissioners can't do it. I don't care who they are. It takes the citizens of Pohokee to work together and say, we're gonna make our city what it is to be. But we have to, but we have to demand and want better. We have to want better. We want better, that's what, that's how we gotta change things to get better. Thank you. If there's any other, uh, commission comments, we will get a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Vice Mayor, motion to adjourn the meeting?
Our second. We'll call medical.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab? Mayor Bab?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Meeting is adjourned.
Mayor Bab?